Meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Mr. Shapiro.
All members are present.
Thank you, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Next, we typically have public comments, but we have no one signed up this evening for public comment. So then, the next part of our agenda is our consent. Tonight, the consent items are a personnel report, claims, and payroll. And as a reminder for what the consent part of our agenda refers to, it is a designated section where our routine business items are grouped together and we vote on them all together, we consider them, and then vote on them all together in a single motion. So tonight, these include personnel report, claims, and payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items this evening?
I move to consider the consent items 3.1 through 3.4 as a block.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Do we have any discussion on the motion items this evening? Nope, alright, we will all vote. All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Up next, we have our really fun part of our meeting this evening. We have the workshop topic, secondary science education. Dr. Dudley.
Great, thank you. So this evening, we're very excited to bring to you, to learn a little bit more about what science instruction looks like in our middle schools and our high school. And so, we're first gonna start by, I'll introduce Dr. Rhonda Peterson. She is a director of curriculum in charge of science and math, and her and Mr. Grimes, our department chair at the high school, is going, they're gonna start the work off.
Alright, thank you, and good evening. Thank you for hosting us this evening. We are so excited to be showing off some of our brightest students in the middle schools and high school, and they're gonna do a little demonstration in a moment on what science education looks like in today's classroom. But before we start that, we, Mr. Grimes and I would like to give you a little bit of background on where we have been the last couple of decades, and how our academic standards have impacted today's classrooms. We'll get started with that. And so, this is a science classroom of the past kids. Aren't we glad that we're in today? You can see students working individually, not a lot of collaboration. They, it looks like they're doing some experiments that have a known result, so duplicating experiments that we already know what the result's going to be. So, in the past, science curriculum was very focused on content delivery, so teachers imparting their knowledge on students. Also, it's very teacher-centered, so lots of lecturing, and it was really centered around discussions, and not a lot of room for student inquiry and collaboration at that time. Not as hands-on in the past, science classrooms of today are a lot more hands-on and collaborative, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Grimes, and he's gonna paint a picture of what today's classroom looks like and how our Indiana academic standards are influencing instruction.
Thank you. These are just a few photos taken the last couple of weeks at the high school, just kind of what a typical day looks like at the high school, and we've had the privilege of going to some of the middle schools, and can say it looks very similar to there as well. A lot of what you're gonna see are, yes, we have labs like before, but these aren't necessarily just validating known results, these are kids trying to identify something different, each group's working on something a little bit different, and trying to kind of solve problems. A lot more of what it looks like is collaboration, and this is just me really walking by, taking the pictures of notes, and kind of how notes look like in classrooms now. A lot more, again, problem-solving with groups of a variety of different kind of ways. So, it's really shifted from a teacher being the sage on the stage, to kids trying to get their hands on real-world experiences and designing some solution. So, like I just said, the goal's today, how things have shift, is making it hands-on and making it real-world. Kids don't need to memorize facts nearly as much, Google's taken that, and AI has taken that job away from us, so it's more about what you can do with things. Just like you saw in the picture, it's student-centered, the teachers are there to help facilitate and not be the home base for the classroom, and again, the real world. Kids also just, this day and age are very interested in what's going on in the world, they are connected, they wanna know how this is gonna impact them in their lives. The big shift that's happened in all of education, and throughout all of Indiana, is we've now shifted towards what we call NGSS, the National Next Gen, Next Gen Science Standards. The big things here are, we really want kids to be doing more, like we said, it really kind of applies a process to that, getting kids engaged with the science and engineering practices, identifying cross-cutting concepts, and really just kind of being able to take science concepts apart, and seeing the big pictures kind of throughout them, and all that involves getting kids in there and doing the science, and not just reading about it. And again, this is about just, the goal is getting kids rolling up their sleeves, finding a way to connect with the science, and engage with it in a way that's gonna impact them and their future and their world. So, it's really shifted from, again, glossaries in the back of the book, let's identify definitions, to how can we, how can we make this work for you, and then kind of leaning more into some of those like, modern-day employability skills. Anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, so at this point in time, we would like to introduce our teachers and our students. We have Mr. Frank Hankins here, he is a physics teacher, and he brought with him Luke Grimes, which he may be related to Mr. Grimes, I'm just saying. And Alex is with him today as well, so, and then we have our department chairs from all three middle schools, Mr. Chris Bartley, would you like to stand? Alright, and Mrs. Suzie Felton, and Ms. Kristen Irwin, and they have students here with them as well, and they also brought along with them some teachers to help navigate the activities. So, we have Mrs. Sam Trapp, and Mrs. Tracy Kraus, and Ms. Katie Russo. So, in just a moment, we're gonna call the kids up, so they can begin their activities. We have four stations, we're going to complete a station in 10 minutes, and then we will rotate, so each of you will get to see all four stations, and this is our assignment. So, you'll start at the station that's designated for you, after 10 minutes, I will call time, and you will rotate to the next station, so station one goes to station two, two to three, and so on, and we can go ahead and begin. So, kids, come on up, and teachers, come on up.
So, who comes up with this, the contraption, this experiment, is this something that's in the book, or are they already decided? The mechanism, does that come?
Yeah, the device is from one of the science companies.
It's just getting bigger.
1.35, 1.4.
No pressure.
Our average is 1.2833.
Using how high off the ground it is, and the average.
You had to get the exact speed.
You got 3.78 per second.
The second split should be around four.
Might be a little off.
Okay, we just gotta do our height now.
Do your new height.
Your height is on the table.
Quickly, make sure how high.
Let's make our top.
Yes.
77 plus 56.
So, it's 1.3.
So, if it's 1.33, how far is it gonna go?
Well, expected to go 1.297 meters. Now, use the compound to go straight down.
Okay, let's do it. We turn it, I'm sorry.
Oh, one of these.
Our highlighter's the official.
Almost two.
Our highlighter's the official.
It's actually nice, although my room is piled, and so we got a nice, very nice, it's like a grid. Always piled for some plans.
We can turn it.
Oh, you'll leave it right there?
So, this is how we determine the grade in the lab.
Make it a little bit.
Who wants to find out what the grade is?
I think, I think, yeah, I think you can turn it on yourself.
Alright, we have about 30 seconds, and then we're gonna switch stations, so station one, the kids will stay put, it's just the adults will move. So, kids stay put, adults move. Station one goes to two, two to three, three to four, four to one. Okay, it's time to switch. Yeah, go ahead, Drew, you lead the way. Adults, go ahead and switch, so station one goes to two, two to three.
So, it's.
Little short when happening.
What are you guys gonna do with that?
We're gonna plug that into our spreadsheet, unless you wanna do it.
It's basically just already the equation that we're using, class just set up, so we don't have to sit here and do that. It's gonna tell us exactly how far, or how fast it goes. So, right out of the launcher, it goes 3.9 meters per second, so we're gonna use, we're gonna lift up this to a new height.
So, it's like, the displacement of how far it went, times the initial velocity, or that was equal to the initial velocity times time, plus one half of acceleration, times t squared. Yeah, it's just done, so that we, we don't have to do any calculations on this. We'll have to measure how high it is off the ground. Well, yeah, but.
Okay, so we've got 1.35 meters off of the ground, so we plug that. And judge on that, it should go 2.04 meters.
So, guys, imagine it's 1990, and you're in America, no, and here don't exist. And you could do all of this, but like, all it took was basically no, it was all very simple. I just, I could do this, but I didn't ever see, and, and I didn't have a teacher.
We didn't have anything like this when I was in high school either. Alright, put your 10 on the floor. Well, that's why we have.
Okay, so.
So, now, under the black sheet of paper, we're saying like, we're on target, and it has 10 in there. Well, no, we could compare it to the first. The goal is to hit exactly. Last group hit eight, so maybe. So. But, without changing how much force is going, it's gonna go just how much. Or this, I just wanna do it.
Oh, that looked really good.
That looked really good.
So, physics is everywhere. You guys like basketball? So that basketball, how much force is it is, for example, for the trajectory that it needs to take. So like, if you're saying at the three point five, how much force, if someone's gonna be there, if they're saying, if you're learning, how much force is it? So, it's really everyone that you...
We have thirty seconds to finish the station.
On this one, we did, but we also did one where we...
Okay, it is time to switch.
Are you, I was gonna say Dan or Keith? Yeah, it's right at sixty-one centimeters. We'll do our freaking meters. And then, there's charcoal paper, so it's gonna give a little...
And then, we'll measure from the front of the mark, since it's given...
So now, we just have to take the average of all these three, so we just gotta measure how far away it is.
I think I could do that.
And then, we just change the height.
We have to look at the height, one point three five meters above the ground. It'll tell us, it should land right at two meters and six centimeters away from that initial mark.
What? He said it wasn't related.
I was gonna say, I had to be able to...
Everyone's...
So, I want to do my face.
There it is.
Hold right up.
There's no minus.
Oh, okay. There's ten and ten.
Yeah, it was warm.
Well, we were allowed to put whatever height we wanted, so it was just...
And it was actually complicated because we had to go down, so we found, and then down the...
Oh.
I think I have it on that.
We got some better money to save for those lives.
We have thirty seconds and then we're gonna rotate to our last station of the evening. So thirty seconds, wrap it up, kids. Okay, time to switch to our last station.
Last one, you guys made it. So what we'll do, is we'll take how high it is off the ground initially, and then from here, we're gonna shoot it off through the... From those three throws, we'll take the average, and then we're going to move it, when we take those averages, we're gonna plug it into an equation that we would normally do in class, but we have a spreadsheet on this computer. And it'll tell us exactly how fast it is when it comes out of the launcher. And then, from that, we're gonna move it to a different height on to the table. And then with that speed and how high it is off the table, we're gonna be able to accurately predict how far it's gonna launch again. And we have a target that's gonna, you guys are gonna test yourselves to see how far it goes to the table. Yeah.
We're like those decimal places on your three point three nine. And then now, now we just have to calculate, or take the new heights and use the speed of the bay and add it to the same equation. It will give us a good rate. Well, it's, it says one point seven eight. Time goes at these. We would've nailed that. Aggressive. Yeah, it starts going down so fast. And it doesn't really add much air, which is actually really high light. That was two thirds. There's one more setting.
Shouldn't this be? So these aren't. Does it make it go further?
Yeah, it'll go one more, it'll go one more meter per second faster than just increasing the potential energy per rest.
Really? Have you seen your.
See how much farther it goes.
Is that all the way?
I think. Right there. The thing right here.
Really?
This is our thirty second warning, we have thirty seconds. Okay, this will conclude our station rotation. If the board members would like to return to their seats as well as our executive team and we will take questions from our students.
Good, yeah, well, maybe.
Oh my gosh.
Or actually, you could come up.
What's the right question? Yeah, when they're, we're standing there, what do you wanna ask?
Yeah.
Just tell me the right question.
Just in case they're, you know, either way.
All right, please join me in giving a round of applause to all of our students, they did an amazing job. All right, hopefully you learned lots and were able to see how multi-dimensional science classrooms have become, they're very cross-curricular, we are acting as scientists do in serving, in solving real-world problems. We would be happy to take questions from anyone that has questions about our science curriculum that you saw today or any questions you might have of one of the students.
I just thought it was, John and I were just discussing how science had been very difficult for us and to see the level of engagement and their enthusiasm was really exciting, so I, you all did such a wonderful job, thank you so much, you made it really understandable and you could really tell that it wasn't just simple regurgitation, but they had really, they really understood the lessons they were doing, it was wonderful.
Thank you.
In the presentation, yeah, thank you so much, that was a lot of fun, makes you wanna go back to science class and it remembers, reminds me of why I didn't stay in that field when I was going to school. The, during the presentation, you had mentioned that rather than focus on breadth, you focus on depth and so how are these topics, areas of science chosen that you really wanna do the deep dive into?
Yeah, they are chosen because of our Indiana academic standards, so we try to find curriculum that is associated with the standards, everything launches from our standards, so we went through a pretty intensive program review at the middle school and we chose Amplify Science, which you got to see this evening, that closely relates to our academic standards, so that's how it's chosen.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanna repeat the thank you to the students and the staff that participated tonight and take, taking your personal time to come here, really, really enjoyed it. Where are we in that process? Like what year is this? What are you seeing?
Yeah, this is year one, actually. Yes, year one, so isn't that impressive?
Cause we had some open houses, right, on the curriculum adoption materials last year.
That's exactly right, last spring, we had an open house and the community could come and preview the curriculum that you viewed this evening.
Yes, that's great, I, I really like it and I hope that you're getting a lot of positive feedback.
I just wanted to thank the students for coming and also the, certainly heard from the seventh and eighth grade students consistently that they are enjoying science more this year than they did before, which I think is the resounding feedback you want when you switch curriculum, that it is more intense and engaging. And I, you know, would agree with Mr. Brown, it almost makes me wanna go back and repeat science, which was not my strongest subject, so thank you guys for being here, I appreciate it.
Thank you again, thank you to all the parents and, and students who've come out here this evening to demonstrate that to us, as well as the teachers and other school staff, I just, this was really good, this board is, is moving towards really being focused on student outcomes and this, this helps us literally see the outcomes because the students are excited and they are demonstrating things to us that are real-world problems, real-world situations and again, for most of us, I think that's vastly different than what we experienced in school, just looking at a textbook, so this just seems like a great curriculum and we're, we're appreciative that you came this evening.
Thank you. Okay, we appreciate your time again, thank you.
And I realize it's a school night, so if there's any of you that needed to, to go ahead and leave, we can take a short break or, or you're also welcome to stay and watch the rest of the board meeting.
Yeah.
Don't everybody leave it.
Only one item left. Wouldn't be right if we slipped out, would it?
We are, thank you Chris for bringing this to my attention, we're gonna go back just a little bit to our consent agenda because we voted to, we voted to approve grouping the consent agenda items together, so now we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda, consent items.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda items three point one through three point four as a group and I'm sorry to be picky, I just wanna make sure everybody gets paid and there's never any question.
No, we appreciate that, so again, the motion from Ms. Wheeler is to approve the consent items three point one through three point three, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro, any discussion this time? Seeing none, we will all take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, the actual motion carries for the consent agenda, thank you. The next item up then is our update, our superintendent update, Dr. Bearsford.
All right, I really appreciate tonight's workshop, it was pretty cool, if I tell Mrs. B that I can now tell you that light travels in a straight line and can transmit and reflect and then if I said that I can also do a simulation to predict tsunamis and that I can also explain to you how protein in spider silk can be used to replace my elbow tendon and then whatever that thing we did with the BB was, I think, I call that science math, physics, that she'll probably think nah, but what a great night, it's great. Hey, tonight, I am representing the Cherry Tree Patriots and I thought it was only appropriate that I would wear a hard hat because Cherry Tree, of course, is under construction and, and we're doing a lot of exciting things there, so that was the, that was my shtick for Cherry Tree, but the Patriot Nation is pretty amazing with their incredible principal, Mr. Peter English, their awesome assistant principal, Amanda Billman, and of course, their talented staff and parents and of course, their superstar students, the Patriots are under construction, so I had to wear my hard hat, but some pretty great things going on at Cherry Tree and we've already had the first group of students move into the newly renovated side and, and that rotation's gonna happen throughout the year, it's pretty special, so, so a big shout out to them, I'll try to keep this pretty quick, I had the opportunity to go to the Night of Show Choir and I've known Mr. Shapiro did and Dr. O'Stryke, anybody else make it to that, but absolutely amazing, four different show choirs performed and it's Broadway quality, just amazing and I could see why they're doing so well in the competitions and if you ever wanna see something, go, go see the show choirs. Also, I went to Taste of Carmel on Friday night and got to not only overeat but also got to donate, do some donations for a great cause, the, the foundation, Carmel Education Foundation really is kinda like the spice of life, they really bring a lot to our teachers, to our students, just to our community, the little special things that they do and at every grade level, they've, they've got their, they, they make a positive difference in getting our kids, enabling them to do some things that are pretty special, like Biz Town and, and some of the Job Sparks and different things like that, it's really, really good. My bell ringer is the boys' swimming team won the state championship in swimming and that was their eleventh year in a row and so now I can end my career in swimming with having all state championships all seven years, which is a lot of pressure and I'm glad that it's moved on to someone else, but, but it was a pretty special meet, they had the second highest score ever by a team in the, in the state meet and also I think they had twenty, was it twenty-one swimmers in the finals and they had, in the fast heat of the finals and then they had, I think, two more swimmers that were in like the, the consolation heat in the state meet and you can only have twenty-four swimmers in the meet, so we had twenty-three of twenty-four in the finals and twenty-one of those were in the, the fast heat, so it was a pretty amazing performance and, and one of the cool things that we get to do on the last event is to go down on the deck and so when you're up high, you can see they're going very fast, but when you're on the deck, you can see that they have a wake much like a motorboat, those guys, those, those guys are moving some water, so it's just amazing, so congratulations to them on their, on number eleven and just a great win for the, for the Greyhounds and with that, I will hand it back over, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bearsford, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.